I have a motion to approve the agenda.
Madam Chair, I would like to move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? For...
For the record, I guess we're approving the agenda for the meeting at this time.
Okay, not the consent agenda.
You want to amend?
Amend, yes.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the agenda for the meeting tonight.
There we go. We got a motion. How about a second on that?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Thank you, Ms. Jester. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Nays have the same opportunity. We're going to have to do our voting because of the way we're doing it by roll call. So Ms. Moore will do roll call.
Ms. Jester?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Shelton?
Aye.
Ms. Banks?
Aye.
Dr. Andrew Hall Leonard?
Aye.
And Ms. Johnson?
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Aye. The agenda is approved. Next up, we have roll call. Ms. Moore?
Ms. Jester?
Present.
Ms. Phillips?
Present.
Dr. Andrew Hall Leonard?
I am present and I would like to make a statement at this time that I am unable to attend the meeting due to personal concerns regarding the school's health. Since we are now meeting, I do appreciate the school board's willingness to participate.
Marsha Williams?
Present.
Andrew Shelton?
Present.
Ms. Coven?
Present.
Carrie Johnson?
Present.
Next up, we have the consent agenda, which is Purchase Order 20-668. To Bellinger Specialty Group, and that is our annual renewal of our student accident insurance. Are there any, is there any discussion in regards to that purchase order? If not, do we have a motion in regards to the purchase order?
I make a motion to approve Purchase Order 20-668 in the amount of $14,860.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. By roll call, nays have the same opportunity.
Ms. Jester?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Shelton?
Aye.
Ms. Banks?
Aye.
Dr. Andrew Hall Leonard?
Aye.
Carrie Johnson?
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye. That motion passes. Next up, we have several items that are pertaining directly to the state of emergency. Because we had varying votes on these by consensus poll, we're going to take them one at a time. So the first one is the waiver of the laptop policy, and that was a temporary waiver to get the devices into our students' hands. Once we're out of the state of emergency, that does go back into place. Do we have a motion in regards to the laptop, the waiver of the laptop policy?
I move to approve the temporary suspend policy.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Nays have the same opportunity by roll call.
Jester?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Banks?
Aye.
Hall Leonard?
Aye.
Johnson?
Johnson?
Aye.
Phillips?
And aye. That motion passes. Next up is the first change to the calendar for 2020. This was making Monday, March 16th, a half a day, and making the remainder of that week closed for students. If you recall, we had several things going on that week, and we were trying to get ahead of the curve. And then the governor beat us out to the rest of it. So we are going to take these one at a time, since we vote, we did a consensus poll one at a time on these. So the first one, the calendar change...
I move to approve the proposed academic calendar change, number one.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Nays have the same opportunity by roll call.
Jester?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Banks?
Aye.
Hall Leonard?
Aye.
Johnson?
Carrie Johnson?
Nay.
Phillips?
Aye. That motion passes. Now we're on to change number two. This was where we changed the Monday, the 16th, to be closed for students versus a half a day. Is there any discussion on that item? Do we have a motion in regards to 3.3?
I move to approve the proposed academic calendar change, number two.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? By roll call, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Nays have the same opportunity.
Jester?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Banks?
Aye.
Hall Leonard?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye. That motion carries. Next would be the change number three, and this is just a formality to carry through with what the governor had proposed. We do not have one in regards to the closure for the remainder of the year at this time, but we do have one amending to where that Monday, the 3rd, was not going to be an early relea-, 23rd, excuse me, was not going to be an early release. We were changing that to be closed. And of course, we were closed the remainder of the week under the governor's initial mandate. So we are looking for a motion in regards to that one as well. Do we have a motion in regards to 3.4?
I move to approve the proposed academic calendar change, number three.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. By roll call, nays have the same opportunity.
Jester?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Banks?
Aye.
Hall Leonard?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye. Moving on to 3.5. This was continuation of pay for non-exempt staff. This motion is to continue paying the non-exempt staff. So when we talk about non-exempt, we're talking about the teachers assistants, the bus driver, bus and car drivers, the cafeteria workers, the custodians, the long-term substitutes, and the clerical staff. This initial was through what we thought was going to be the closure of March the 27th. So that is what the motion we have before us at this time. Any discussion of that?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I can.
This is Andrew. My question would be, is it possible to amend that for the remainder of the year versus having to come back?
If that is the will of the board, we can do that. Dr. Sterling, would you be fine with that proposal as well? To extend the payment of our non-exempt staff through the remainder of the school year?
That has to go to the budget office.
Okay.
So we have to be certain that we are able to do that. So if we pay them beyond the, it says from March 16th to 27th. Yes.
Okay, so then my question, my question is, whether or not those funds have already been allocated for the staff? Does that mean their budget already has been adjusted for this year?
Yes, excellent questions, Dr. Hall Leonard, but when it comes to your bus staff, you have extra ones, you have 21st century, they've been paid at different buckets. So I don't have a problem with it. However, before I make a recommendation to the board, I always want to go back to the finance department first. So that means at our next meeting, we can work on it, but I don't want to just blindly present you with something without it being confirmed by the assistant superintendent.
Okay, so the superintendent of finance did not look at this, this memo, let's see this one, I'm looking for it, see? Would that be, Mr. Ryder? He had not looked at that?
Well, the funding for this period is here, is there, absolutely.
He, Dr. Hall Leonard, what Mr. Ryder said is the period that is referenced in this motion, they had looked at. They have not looked at the remainder yet. Would that be correct, Mr. Ryder?
Okay, so then my next question would be, not to relate the point, but my next question would be, how soon will we receive that rest of the school board? So that we can make a decision and staff members are not going to without paying?
Well, we'll work it daily, Dr. Hall Leonard, so if you allow me to work with the assistant superintendent tomorrow, then I can notify the board chair to inform the board when we'll be able to provide you with that information.
Okay, so if all of that information will go out, not only to the board chair, but to the school board, that correct?
Absolutely, yes ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
And hopefully within the next few, before the next payroll, we will have...
Oh, absolutely. You understand that this is a sense of urgency, so yes.
Thank you.
So back to 3.5. We had a motion and a second on that, correct, Ms. Moore? Am I correct? No, we do not, we do not have a motion. Do we have a motion on 3.5?
I move to approve the request for continuation of pay for non-exempt staff, and if their pay be based on their normal hourly rate during March 16th to March 27th closure.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Nays have the same opportunity.
Jester?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Banks?
Aye.
Hall Leonard?
Aye.
Johnson?
Ms. Johnson?
Nay.
Phillips?
Aye. That motion passes as well. Next up is 3.6. This would be the spring sports stipends. As you may recall, unfortunately, with the timing of this pandemic, that put a, into spring sports season before it ever even really got off the ground good. But our sponsors for those sports had already started practicing and working with their students, their athletes. So this proposal was to pay them a third of that stipend, since they had already done march work, and withhold the remainder until if or when the season resumes. So that is the proposal before us with 3.6. Do we have a motion in regards to item 3.6?
I move to approve the request to pay one-third of the spring sports stipend with the March 31st, 2020 payroll, and the remainder if or when the season resumes.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second.
But we have two seconds. Any discussion?
I think I've been muted.
No, you're still here. I'm looking at, Dr. Sterling was questioning the superintendent's recommendation versus what we were doing. So I'm looking at it real quick. Bear with me.
To the very bottom.
Okay. The motion before us that we have is the one-third...
The vote is, is there a reference to what we polled as a board?
Correct, and that is what we were polled as a board, and we agreed upon.
Yes.
The superintendent is recommending, within the memorandum, to pay the entire coaches' stipend for the spring sports sponsors. That is correct. That is correct. Okay, we have to have a vote based on of our consensus. So we can go ahead and vote on that.
It would be my recommendation on one more member that just like we're going to take that other, that other item that we're talking about and come back, that maybe we need to come back during this, and that, Ms. Ryder goes back to the question.
I would agree with you, Dr. Hall Leonard. What is the consensus of the board on that item? Because the superintendent's recommendation is to pay the entire coaches' stipend. We did have a consensus poll, and there was a lot of discussion back and forth amongst us with the consensus poll over what to pay and how to pay. And we all agreed upon, based upon information that was provided to us, to pay a third, with the remainder withheld pending the remainder of the season.
That's what I understood.
Are those monies already allocated? I mean, should I say are they already in the budget?
Absolutely.
The reason why I changed the recommendation, because at that time when the board was polled, and I do apologize, Madam Chair, for not providing you this information, but we just received word recently that, it just slipped my mind, when the governor came out and dismissed school, closed school for the entire year. So at the time that you were voted, there was a possibility that school was going to be open, and the people that, you know, starters to coach are depending on these funds, because they have been already allocated, unlike hourly workers' salaries. These are stipends that have been signed. Now that the governor has closed school indefinitely, and these individuals have signed up to coach, there is no way, due to unforeseen circumstances, that they could recruit this funding. Okay, that was the rationale.
So the funding is in the budget?
Yes.
So since we had a consensus poll, I would say we go ahead and vote based upon our consensus poll that we took, and then we come up with a, we present a second motion in regards to the superintendent's proposal. Is the board fine with that?
I want to do that now, Chair, and add to, I want to make a question, I have a question, some of the sponsors have already been allocated from these people that work here, and we wanted to ensure that that are also...
That, Ms. Johnson, Dr. Hall Leonard was referring back to 3.5, where the, the non-exempt staff pay.
No, I was asking about the coaching stipend, because it was supposed to be paid out at the end, at the last paycheck of this month.
Right.
Received it. Is it a situation where we're going to have to take money back now?
No, it's the AM money.
The stipend, has the full stipend already been put into their March 31st pay?
No.
No, it has not.
Thank you.
Okay.
May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
The point was made that these funds are in the budget. But my question is, what impact has this pandemic had on the receipt side of our budget?
And that is, and that is what I'll be researching. See, the dollars for the stipends have already been received. It depends on when. See, the hourly folks are going to be, will be paid out through the end of June. Now, what comes into question is the revenue stream.
Right.
So the revenue stream of this has already been received. I keyed in the largest cash receipt I've ever keyed in, just this morning. And so, so that was, I had to get it in by March 30th. But, but like we said, the hourly folks, that's a different, that's a different question, there's a different risk.
Okay. All right. Dr. Hall Leonard, did you hear what Mr. Ryder said by chance?
Yeah, he can get closer to her, I'm calling him, I don't know.
Okay.
Okay.
Ryder, Ryder is...
Big feet.
He's good, right there.
So, yes, the revenue streams from the state between now and the end of June are not, they're not precarious. It's just that what we thought we knew might not be, might not come in, and that will affect all of the other non-exempt folks. The dollars that we paid for these stipends have already been received and is funded.
Okay, let me ask you, Mr. Ryder, let's go back to that, about the situation of paying for non-exempt.
Sure.
Those teacher assistants, do they not have a contract? That was already built into, I'll take mine at the time, the teacher assistants. Do those teacher assistants not have a contract that was already built into the budget, you are certain amount of money to be paid for this school?
Yes.
They did, okay. Go to the budget party, I'll refer my clerk. Do they have a contract currently in place? And is allocated a certain amount of money, and it was already built into the budget?
Yes, yes.
The same thing with cafeteria workers.
Right.
These cafeteria workers, custodians, I'm not talking about the long-term substitutions, but the, yeah, the long-term substitutions and the staff, the foundation of all the monies.
This is true, this is true.
And then, and my question is, but they're already built into the budget, but we just, we have to, to me, not the amount. They all have a contract, the contract stated from this time to that time, this is the amount of money that I will retain, the school board on the group. For the teacher assistants, the bus contractors, the cafeteria workers, the custodians, the long-term substitutes, and the staff, based on that budget for this school?
Yes, and, and...
Just add, just add the stipend, but this is what you're going to do?
Yes, and all of those contracts were approved based on the assumption that the budget and revenue would come in. And we're pretty sure...
I'm going to, I have to respond.
Dr. Sterling is coming up to respond.
Um, Dr. Hall Leonard, I understand what you're saying, but it goes a little deeper than that, because with our ADM, and how our money is coming in from the state, it sounds as if the mind, you may have the mindset that all of the money is here, and all of the money is not here. And all of the money does fluctuate depending on our attendance. Now we're in a pandemic, and Dr. Lane continuously updates superintendent's because of our state tax, our ADM, and we have to monitor that extremely closely, because our dollars may fluctuate from now until the end of the school year. So you're exactly right. Our projections were, we would have this much money to pay this amount of staff. I am full agreeance with the board. If this is what you want to do. However, I have to provide you the best information per our finance director, excuse me, our assistant superintendent of finance, that our projections will be able to, the funding will be able to meet our projections. This is also a local, a local decision, because many divisions, unfortunately, know now that they will not have the funding, and they are not, they're either not paying TAs, they're not paying secretaries, they're not paying bus drivers, they're not paying long-term subs. That is, of course, the will of the board, depending on the revenue that comes in. And I cannot give you that until I meet with Mr. Ryder, until we get the definite numbers from the state, when those payments are going to continue to come in, either go up or down. I'm sorry, I use the late persons, and he gives you the technical, but I'm just giving you, you know, just in late persons terms.
I agree, that, Dr. Sterling, I have full understanding. I am keeping up with the information provided by Dr. Lane. I'm just having concerns for never being approved, coaches to be paid, and not be considered of teachers, people that are actually assisting or interrupting, help to prepare our students, uh, after that. Well, I just have a little difficulty with that, but it's a little...
And, and just to clarify, Dr. Hall Leonard, we're not saying that we're not going to come back and pay them. We just need to...
But we want your support, we want my hearing, that we want your support with this stipend, but we want to come back. Every business, so I'm already making a point, if you want to come back, every business, you should come back, every business, those stipends. This revisit at all?
Well, we can, we can go ahead and vote, and have a vote on the motion as we took the consensus poll. And then we can put forth and see if there is a motion concerning the remainder of the superintendent's recommendation, and take it from there. So we will go back to the consensus poll, which was paying one-third of the stipends now, and holding the remainder until if or when the season resumes. We have a motion and a second on that, correct, Ms. Moore? Is there any further discussion on that? By roll call, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Nays have the same opportunity.
Jester?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Banks?
Nay.
Hall Leonard?
I love you, sir, but I know that this is not a fair...
Correct. This is for the proposal as we took a consensus poll. For the one-third, correct. For the one-third now, with the remainder being withheld to if or when the season resumes.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to get started, yes.
Okay.
Johnson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye. That motion carries. Since the actual recommendation from the superintendent was in the item proposed to us in the memorandum, does anyone wish to put forth a motion in regards to that at this time?
I make a motion that we reconvene to consider paying the full payment for the coaches' stipend.
Okay. Ms. Shelton is requesting to table that item to a future meeting, and reconvene on it at a later time. Do we have a second on that motion?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion on that?
I would just like to revisit that when we revisit the budget as it pertains to the rest of the employees as well.
Duly noted. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Nays have the same opportunity.
Jester?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Banks? Hall Leonard?
Aye.
Johnson?
Johnson? Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Phillips?
And aye. So we will revisit that. Dr. Sterling, will we revisit this, the remainder of the non-exempt staff? Next up is the budget overview for approval. I am going to step away from the mic, and I am going to let Mr. Ryder come closer, if he doesn't have to come right up to the mic, so that we are social distancing appropriately. Mr. Ryder?
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Good evening, Board. This is a fairly lengthy budget document, and it goes into quite a bit of detail. But I, you know, so I'll just make a couple of comments. On the first slide, I gave something for a little historical perspective, so when we look back at this and say, what was going on back then? Why did we have to get this done so quickly? And, you know, so we're in the middle, we're in the middle of a unprecedented problem with our country and our world, actually. What I did was, all we could do is what we had at the time that the governor put out his calculator. And the, I mean, it was within days of the legislature adopting the budget for the state. Days later, he closed all the schools, and so it's, so, but this is the best information we had at the time. And the only caution that I put in, I put in a couple of cautions here for the state revenue next year, about 1.6 million in sales tax. I mean, when you close all the businesses in Virginia, you're not collecting sales tax, and that's going to affect us in July and August. But most all, every business manager I spoke to, they're just going to use the calculator as is, until the state comes out with something else. So I did put in another caution down on the other slide with that, you know, this, this budget may change, and it probably will be amended, you know, before we get too further into the next year. But as it sits, the expense assumptions on Slide 7, if, if the dollars come in from the state that we think, and the turnover of the retirees, a good portion, 14 of them, these are the, all the things that we, we will be able to pay for. With very little contribution from the city, very little increased contribution. We're only asking for $45,000. A far cry from the 270 that we were asking for. So the rest of these things, you know, all the way over to the right, as long as that's a zero, we're fine. Don't be, don't be too, you know, concerned about that deficit there because, in the yellow where we think we're gonna end up this year, because you're supposed to end up at a deficit equal to the rollover. That's how it's accounted for. And so that's around, our, our rollover is 335, I'm projecting around 324, and a zero for next year balanced budget. And there's, there's your standard for income statements that I put out every month. And the recommendation is to adopt this budget and, and see how it goes for the rest of the year. Thank you.
All right, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Ryder or Dr. Sterling in regards to the budget proposal? Okay, Ms. Shelton has questions?
We had a 200 and something thousand dollar questionable amount. I don't remember what that was related to.
Oh, yes.
You were referring to the questions that you'd sent?
No, there was a, I think when you first presented the budget, it was a, an amount from the city that they were saying we had a rollover or something like that.
Yes, yes, the carryover.
That carryover, they weren't ones that add to our budget.
Yeah, yeah, they, um, that's another thing that we kind of discovered throughout this fiscal year. In prior years, when they would grant the, the school division a rollover, what you're supposed to do is you're supposed to spend, you're supposed to have a balanced budget. And if they say you have a $100,000 rollover, you have to have a $100,000 deficit that year. Otherwise, you didn't spend the rollover, and they think that you're just taking the money and keeping it. And we found that out the hard way this year. So, so when they said for the $335,000 rollover, they said, you guys got a rollover last year and you didn't spend it. So we said, all right, we promise we'll spend it this year. So we have to spend it between now and June 30th.
So does that mean you're keeping us where we are?
Yes.
Or can they add some?
No, we have to spend into about a $300,000 deficit. Otherwise, the city's gonna get mad.
Is your question going forward, we're asking for level funding? We're asking for a $45,000 increase over our baseline?
Yes.
Right?
Right, are they giving us the increase, or are we?
We had two work sessions in this past two weeks scheduled with them, they were both canceled. So we're taking a risk that hopefully they'll give it to us.
When do they meet on the budget?
When did we?
When do they meet?
Uh, theirs has to be adopted by May 15th. Ours has to be adopted by tomorrow.
Due to the pandemic and all the financial streaming that has been happening with the state, the legislators are going to meet again on April 22nd. So this budget that we, if the board does pass, just keep in the back of your mind, it may change, because they're looking to adjust the budget by close to a billion dollars. Will K1 be affected at this time? We won't know until the 22nd. But by the statute, our budget has to be passed by the first day of August. With what we have, what we know now.
Just a, well, a comment question, I'm not sure what it is, but I listened to a talk with Secretary Arnie the other night, and he stated that 260 something plus will be allocated for K12. And also, there's a $60,000 discretionary fund. So do we have access to those funds as well?
Excellent question, thank you. We don't have access to those funds at this time. They will be coming down to us from the stimulus package. And Dr. Lane today stated that he will update his FAQs, frequently asked questions, and most likely, the division will receive the same amount that they receive in Title I funding. So that communicated to the superintendent that if we receive 200,000 in Title I, we'll receive 200,000 additional in the stimulus funding. But we have not received that at this time.
Are there any other questions? Thank you.
And the city's proposed date for action on our budget is May the 4th. That's their proposed date at this time. Any other questions in regards to the approval of the proposed budget? And just as a reminder, what we do at this point is we approve the budget to send it to the city. And then once the city makes their determination on how much they're going to fund us with, then if we need to make adjustments to our budget accordingly for what they're funding us, we do. And that is the point at which we adopt our budget. Just for clarification. Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Ryder. Do, do we have a motion in regard, I'm sorry, were you saying something, Ms. Johnson?
No.
Okay. Do we have a motion in regards to the approval of our 2020-2021 budget?
I'm motion to approve the 2021 budget expenditures and revenues and salary scales as presented.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? By roll call, all those in favor signify by saying aye, nays have the same opportunity.
Jessica?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Banks?
Aye.
Hall Leonard?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye. That motion carries. Next up is the Franklin City Public Schools instructional expectations for this unprecedented closure. Dr. Sterling, I'm gonna let you.
I'm pretty loud.
Go without.
Um, last week I submitted the instructional framework that we will be working from for the remainder of the school year. It is a document that is constantly evolving. I will be providing the board updates to this document via the board communication. At this time, the gov, the government, the governor did a stay-at-home, so part of this document, when students are able to come in and get their laptops, has been suspended at this time, but we are constantly revising it and working on it, making certain that we are providing instructional services to our students, not just our regular ed, but our special ed as well as ESL.
Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Sterling in regards to the instructional expectations as they're put forth? And keep in mind, I, I, we all know, because we all touch education in many different ways, things are rapidly changing in the area of education right now. So this is a fluid document, I think I'm very safe to say. So there may be changes that do come to this, but we're, we're trying our best to find ways all across this nation right now on how to educate students virtually, which is not something we're all accustomed to. Next up is business by school board members. Does anyone?
As a tie, um, in reference to the instructional expectations, wanted to thank the Dr. Sterling and her staff for making sure that they are providing an instructional learning plan for students with special needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hall Leonard. Next up is 6.1 business by school board members. Does anyone have anything to share with the board?
Um, just want to say that I commend Dr. Sterling and her team for providing the food bank services to the community, along with, I believe, I know the YMCA and other partnerships in the county. But I just say kudos to Franklin City Public Schools for just working as a team, getting those packets out there, and making sure those who were in need were assisted.
Absolutely, and if you don't mind, Ms. Grant Banks, I'll piggyback on that. Um, I do know that we did send out notification to family members that the food service is temporarily suspended for the division, but that is exactly what it says, it is only temporary. The division is working on rolling out something else. We just, as a division, I, I think I can safely speak for you, Dr. Sterling, in saying that we had concerns with how safe that was for our students and our families, coming and picking up and the exposure that may be there. So we, we're trying to come up with a better plan and a better way to make sure that everyone is safe and fed all at the same time. One other item that I did have for business by school board members this morning, before I could ever even roll off the email myself, Gina Patterson from V S B A contacted me about our May 1st scheduled board training session. Of course, that will not be able to go on as we had planned because we are still under a mandatory stay-at-home order until June 10th. So Ms. Patterson of V S B A has proposed that there is a possibility we could do it as a Zoom meeting, that they would try their best to figure out how to make that function so that we could do that, or that we could postpone it until later in the summer if we so chose, July, August, sometime around then. So I am putting that to the board as to what the board would prefer to try to accommodate that, whether they want to look at doing it electronically as a Zoom meeting, or whether they would prefer to actually wait and delay that until later in the summer. Does anybody have any feelings or thoughts on that?
I would prefer to wait till later in the summer. I would prefer it to be in person.
Okay.
And I think it's too early to try to reschedule something considering that everything is continually changing with this pandemic.
Right, it, this one was our self-evaluation. So it's our annual self-evaluation that we usually conduct once a year. I think we did our last one in July, I think it was July last year when we did that.
I'm in favor of late summer, August, actually.
So we've got two in favor, any?
Same.
Same? Okay. 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 And Ms. Chester, you gonna come back and join us?
I'll be here just in the summer, so I really don't have preference.
So I, I will contact her back and let her know, since it seems more in favor of delaying and doing it in person, and I do feel the same way. I think when we all meet as a group, we tend to be more productive. So I think that is my preference as well, and I will respond back to her accordingly. And as things develop with that, I will definitely keep all board members apprised of how that process goes. And if we come up with a date and are released from our lockdown, then we will go from there. Does anyone else have anything for business by school board members?
I was just gonna move to adjourn.
That would be next. I hope the board, I would be remiss if I did not say thank you to each and every one of you for being here and calling in and being a part of this. Thank you for all that, all of you are continuing to do on a daily basis. Thank you to our staff, because the staff of this division has really undergone a huge metamorphosis, a huge, I hate to say catastrophe, but this really is. It's, it's catastrophic to education what's going on right now. But our teachers have stepped forward, our staff has stepped forward, not just the teachers, and have put the education of our children at the forefront of everything that's going on in their lives. And I want to thank them, each and every one of them, for all that they are doing. Anything else? Ms. Johnson, did I hear a motion to adjourn?
Yes, yes, she did.
Second.
I have a motion of second, any discussion? Okay, so we have to have a roll call. All those in favor signify by saying aye, nays have the same opportunity.
Jessica?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Banks?
Aye.
Hall Leonard?
Aye.
Johnson?
Johnson? Aye. Thank you very much to everyone, we are adjourned.